And I hope folks will take notice of the fact that we have another flag up there this meeting, which will be up there for a while, to honor the fact that this is Pride Month, and to recognize the members of the LGBTQ plus members of our community and the important role they play, and in fact is a sign of how inclusive San Carlos is for everybody, not just anybody of a particular group. So thank you very much for doing that. Do we have any changes to the order of the agenda from either staff or the dais?
No changes from staff this evening, Mr. Chair, but I will have a comment as part of the consent calendar that I'd like to make before about omission to an item we'd like to correct.
Feel free to leap in if I forget that in time. Any changes from the dais? I would actually like to, if my colleagues are okay with it, I would like to actually propose that we swap items nine and 10. So basically, we do the City Housing Strategic Work Plan Discussion before we do discuss and provide direction on the role of commissions. Does anybody have a problem with that? Okay. We will do that. And then, let's see. The next item on the agenda, we have a couple of presentations and proclamations tonight. So the first is a presentation from the San Carlos Leos Club on the services that it provides. Welcome.
We're going to do, I'm Cora Menez Carpenter, and I am one of the two advisors for the San Carlos Leos Club. I'm a San Carlos Lion. And two years ago, we rejuvenated the club to get youth involved in our club, and each of the kids here today are active members. And we have about 23 members, but with graduations and eighth grade field trips and things, it was hard. It ended up to be a hard night. It started out to be an easy night. So we're going to tell you just a couple minutes about our club.
So Leos Club is a community-based club open to 12 to 18-year-olds, and they serve their community and can make a difference globally.
Our Leos Club motto is: Leadership, Develop Skills as a Project Organizer, Time Manager, and Team Leader.
Experience, Learn How Teamwork, Cooperation, and Collaboration Can Bring Exciting Changes to Your Community and World.
Leos Club motto is: Opportunity, Make Friends, and Feel the Rewards of Community Service.
So some ways we volunteer is the San Carlos Easter Egg Hunt. We've served Lions events, and we've collected food for Carings Cup Board.
We've raised money by holding bake sales and popcorn sales. We've given scholarships for music camps, bought a new flag for TL, and sponsored an AYSO soccer team.
And that's kind of what we've done. Like I said, we've just really been back in existence for two years now, not quite two full years. And we're open to all students in San Carlos, grades seven to 12, or ages 12 to 18. And then, once they become 18, they can become a Lion if they so desire. And that's kind of our presentation for tonight, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming. And by the way, I have to tell you, I really like the shirts.
Little retro tie-dye.
There you go.
Thank you so much, Cal.
Thanks for coming, folks. The next item on the agenda is we are presenting a proclamation to Natalie Thaw, first-place winner of Rethink Waste's 2019 Trash to Art Contest. Is Natalie here? There's Natalie. Here, why don't you meet me up at the podium? Hi Natalie, how are you? Here, you can say hi loud, too.
Hi.
There we go, great. Thanks for coming tonight, and thanks for that really beautiful piece of artwork. I won't read this entire proclamation, but it says there were a whole bunch of people who competed to basically submit stuff from using recycled materials, right? That you were able to turn into something. I forgot to ask, oh, we do have a picture. When I saw the picture, I was like, that was really neat. And I hope that you'll be able to spend maybe a minute and tell us a little bit about how you came up with it. So congratulations.
Thank you. I came up with it because I wanted to make a small model of Rethink Waste, and I thought it would be cool to make the building and all the stuff.
And you know something? It is really cool. Have you had a chance to go over to the facility over there? Have you been inside of it? I have to tell you, it's one of my favorite places in San Carlos. I always love going to throw trash out because I get to really throw things all over the place and nobody minds. But again, thank you so much for what you did. And this is a little proclamation telling us how impressed we were with what you did. So thank you. So the next item on our agenda is a proclamation recognizing June as LGBTQ plus month. This is, as I mentioned in my opening comments tonight, this is a really important thing, and it demonstrates yet again how inclusive and welcoming San Carlos is. But I think there's somebody on the dais who's far better positioned than I am to really take the charge here. So I'm going to ask my colleague Laura to read the proclamation and share whatever other thoughts she may have.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Laura Palmer Lohan, Councilmember for the City of San Carlos. It is a true honor to serve all of you, and I'm delighted to read this proclamation. This will be, as my kids call in music, a sight reading. I don't know the notes, but I'll do my best. Proclamation declaring the month of June 2019 as National LGBTQ Pride Month. Whereas, one of the city of San Carlos's core values is to be safe, diverse, welcoming, and engaged community. And whereas, many members of the San Carlos community who contribute to the enrichment of our city are a part of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ plus community. And whereas, the month of June was designated Pride Month to commemorate the dedication, bravery, and sacrifice of those who led the 1969 Stonewall uprising in New York City, which sparked the modern LGBTQ plus liberation movement in the United States. And whereas, the rainbow flag has been used as a symbol of LGBTQ pride, plus pride, and social movements, and flying the rainbow flag at City Hall throughout the month of June further symbolizes the city's celebration of diversity and support for the LGBTQ plus community. And whereas, the city of San Carlos is strengthened by the diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents, all of which contribute vibrant character to our city of good living. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, it says Mark Olbert, Mayor --
It's okay.
-- of the city of San Carlos, Laura Palmer Lohan standing in for him, on behalf of the entire City Council, hereby proclaim the month of June 2019 as LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of San Carlos, and urge our community to stand together and actively promote the principles of equality and liberty dated this 10th day of June 2019. So he said I could have a few words, and with Mark's definition of a few words, we'll be here for like maybe another half hour or so, but --
Okay.
But anyway, I just wanted to thank the community. I'm so proud of San Carlos, the city staff for working very hard to put all of this together. It was a mere suggested idea, and they've done amazing work in a very short amount of time. And my dream and hope is that the word inclusive in our vision is carried out in many more ways besides Pride Month, and I do hope that we celebrate the diversity of our community in many more ways besides this. So thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Laura. We will move on to public comment. This is time for anybody who wishes to address the council on an item that's not on the agenda tonight can feel free to do so. If you haven't already filled out a speaker card to do so, you can do one afterwards. There will be time at each item as we bring them up to discuss them to also ask questions or make comments on an individual item that is on the agenda. So this is kind of for things that are not on the agenda. I don't have any speaker cards, but is there anybody here who wants to address the council? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next item, which is Council Communications and Announcements. Who would like to start? Or should I just pick somebody? Sarah?
Thanks, Mark. Just getting my notes ready. So today, I just wanted to give you guys an update. I attended the San Mateo County Libraries Joint Powers Authority Board Meeting, and we approved a budget. But two things I wanted to highlight today was, we, the board requested that staff bring back in the fall some pros and cons of inviting other cities to become members of the JPA. So if you have any opinions on that, I welcome a conversation with you about that. Not all of the cities in San Mateo County are represented in the library governing board, so that's on the table for the fall. And we'll also be discussing potentially adding a second bookmobile in ways that the county libraries can work potentially with schools who are facing some rather large funding disparities. So that's my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Laura?
Thank you, Chair Olbert. A couple of items to report on. I attended the Council of Cities Dinner at the end of May in Millbrae. They shared a report on changes that'll be made at SFO. At present, it handles a capacity of 56 million passengers on an annualized basis. I was rather stunned with that number. And they're currently undergoing a $7 billion capital improvement program, part of which will include a remodel of Terminal One. So I thought that was interesting. Last week, I attended Association of Bay Area Governments. This is an organization that essentially is the governing body to help regional collaboration across all cities in the Bay Area. At that meeting, we approved the 2019-2020 budget and work program. And that work program includes some high-level strategies to address transportation issues, housing availability, climate change, among other things. In addition, they informed us that they will be increasing the RENA allocation for all of the cities. That'll be reset this year. So we, as a community, will need to be prepared for that. And the RENA allocation has to do with the number of affordable housing units that each city is required to build by a certain point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Any comments from the other side of the dais? Ron?
Thank you, Mark. Just a couple things. I am a member of the SAM Trans Board, and we had a meeting last week. And just a second, I had a note on it that I had written down. But the SAM Trans budget has been approved. There, I don't know if anybody knew, but there apparently was a fire on one of the bridges for the Dumbarton Railway, which the district owns. Bus ridership has struggled recently, but SAM Trans budget is in good shape. On the Caltrain Board, of which I'm also a member, there was a long discussion on the redesign of the new EMUs, which are another name for train cars. Many of you may be aware that electrification is coming to Caltrain, and it'll be here in August of 2022. If you've ride the train recently, you've probably seen foundations going in for poles. There's going to be wires. They're called catenary wires, which are going to provide the overhead electricity for the system. And there was a, the last meeting was primarily about how to redesign the cars on Caltrain to accommodate more bikes. We have a lot of people who ride the bikes, ride or bring their bikes onboard. There's about 6,000 people a day that bring their bikes. That represents about 10% of the overall ridership every day. The new cars are going to have about the same amount of seats or spaces for bikes, but they, but there will be more trains running, so the frequency of the trains is going to be improved as well. So we're looking forward to that, and we're very much appreciative of the input from the bikes-onboard community who gave us a lot of valuable input. Oh, and lastly, just Oh, and lastly, just, I attended a fundraiser for Arbor Bay School, which is a private school that occupies a building that houses them. And it used to house the... It used to be the Kiwanis Building here. It's our old rec center. But I've attended a fundraiser for Arbor Bay School and I was very proud to be there because they do... They provide a lot of great services for children with all kinds of challenges. That's it.
Thank you, Ron. Adam, do you have something?
Sure. I don't want to be left out. So, I attended the SFO Noise Roundtable last week. So, Laura mentioned some of the changes going on already on that. But we... They're looking at maybe some potential rerouting of flights based on noise. And I guess the only change that's sort of more effective for here is they're changing the Uber and Lyft pickups to the fifth floor of the garage. So, that's... It will hopefully make departures and arrivals a little bit better.
Thank you, Adam. I had a couple of things. One, just very brief item, Silicon Valley Clean Water, which is the facility that processes all of the wastewater from Belmont, San Carlos, Redwood City, and big parts of Menlo Park and some other areas, is in the midst of a huge modernization repair program. And part of that involves installing some new, very large wastewater tunnels to take it to run out to the plant that's basically at the tail end of Redwood Shores out by the bay. And I saw a press release the other day that the special tunnel boring machine is going to be arriving shortly. So, those of you who may have an interest in that, this is the same kind of technology that's used to build things like BART tunnels. So, that's how big a tunnel this is. So, hopefully more to tell about that as it starts coming together. My main comment tonight, I just want to share for the benefit both of the public and for my colleagues. There has been some recent... There have been some recent court cases that, after talking with Greg and Jeff about this, we want to tighten up a little bit the way in which we decide what things we put on future agendas and how we go about doing that. We'll probably talk more about that in the strategic planning mini-retreat later this week. But for now, the main thing is that we... And I don't think we've ever really done this, but we need to be very careful when somebody proposes an idea that they'd like to have put on a future agenda, that we limit our discussion to only talking about whether we want to have it on the agenda, not our views on it or whatnot. That's a difficult gray area, particularly if somebody suggests something and you hear it and you go, "Well, I'm not quite sure what that is, so I need to ask a clarifying question." There's a narrow point, narrow line between clarifying question and actually getting into discussing stuff. So, if you see Greg and I sort of jumping in a little more frequently than we might otherwise have done in the past, that's why. So, just wanted everybody to be aware of that. That brings us to item 6B, which is we... One of the changes the council made recently is we have a large variety of commissions that advise the council on various matters. The Planning Commission that makes decisions on development projects in town, the Parks and Rec and Culture Commission that deals with parks and rec and cultural issues, the Economic Development Advisory Commission, which helps us with the topics of economic development, and the Transportation and Circulation Commission, which deals with traffic and parking. We've appointed a number of commissioners recently to those roles. And we decided that, we haven't done this historically in the past, but we want to recognize both the outgoing commissioners, who typically are leaving because they're moving out of town or they're turning out. There's a limit to the amount of time you can spend on a commission. But we also want to recognize their service, which we will be doing at a future meeting. But we want to here tonight, recognize the folks that we have appointed to the current positions. So, I'm just going to read the names and the commissions that they're on. We've appointed Molly Barton to the Museum of San Carlos History Board. The city appoints two, is it, Jeff? Is that right? Two members of that board. Nishant Garg, who is appointed to the Transportation and Circulation Commission. Cecile Lee, who is appointed to Parks, Rec, and Culture Commission, as was Bethany French and John Durkin. Ellen Garvey, who is appointed to the Planning Commission. And lastly, just tonight, we appointed Haye Young Dotwanni to the Residential Design Review Committee. If anybody has any questions about what these committees do, you can find lots of information on it, about them, on the website. And I would encourage people to do that because these are all volunteer positions and they really are critical to making the city work properly. So, if you ever have an interest in wanting to give back to your community or volunteer to help make San Carlos even better than it is, getting on a commission is a great way to do that. Plus, if you don't behave yourself, sometimes you end up on the council. Right, Sarah? Anyway, with that, we will move on to item 7, which is the Consent Calendar. Jeff, I think you said you had a comment or correction you needed to make.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to point out, this was brought to our attention earlier today by Council Member Rack, that the staff has omitted North Crestview and Vista Parks from item 7F. And I'd also like to make the statement, because we're going to be going through the list tomorrow, to make sure all the other parks are correctly listed. But the intent from the council and the direction that we have and our intent to follow through is for the wayfinding to cover all city parks. So, that is the intent of that section of the item. And we'll make that correction and ensure that it happens and the work gets done.
And I take it that you and Greg have discussed this and we don't need to bring something back or modify it, other than what you just did?
Just a clarifying point.
Okay, that's fine. So, Consent Calendar items, Consent Calendars are items that the council normally approves en masse without discussion, although any council member can ask that an item be pulled off and addressed separately so that there can be discussion about it. Is there anybody who would wish to either pull items off of the Consent Calendar or otherwise make a motion?
I move to approve City Council Consent Calendars, item A through F, and item G, adopting ordinance number 1548, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos amending and replacing Chapter 5.40 of the San Carlos Municipal Code Regulating Massage Businesses.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer-Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Councilmember Olbert?
Yes. Consent Calendar carries. So, we'll move on to item 8, New Business. We have one item of new business tonight. Consideration of reappointing two Youth Advisory Council voting members for the 2019-20 term, appointing two Youth Advisory Council voting members for the 2019-20 term, appointing one alternate member for the 2019-20 term, and recognizing two retiring Youth Advisory Council members. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Olbert and council members. My name is Amy Newby, Parks and Recreation Director. Thanks for having everyone this evening. I'd like to just introduce Caitlin Matoso. She's our Youth Development Coordinator. She oversees daily operations of the Youth Center. She advises Youth Advisory Council, what we like to refer to as YAC, and also works with some of our contract instructors on some of our special interest classes. And so, with that, I'd like to bring Caitlin up, who's going to share the outgoing and incoming YAC members this year.
Welcome, Caitlin.
Thank you. Good evening, council. We are looking so forward to swearing in our new Youth Advisory Council members, as well as saying goodbye to some members that are leaving for college. All members being appointed tonight will be serving a one-year term. First off, I would like to introduce our members renewing their terms. When I call your name, please stand up and come forward. First up, we have Ezra Bergensen-Michelson. He is a sophomore at the Urban School of San Francisco. This is Ezra's third term, a third appointment to YAC. Next up is Laura Simakova. Laura is a sophomore at Crammont High School. She served as our vice chair this past year and is seeking her second appointment to YAC. Next, we have Maya Devalcher-Vuvu. She is actually out of town, so she's not with us tonight. But Maya served as an alternate this past year, so this will be her first appointment as a voting member. And next, we have Sebastian Fuen. He is a junior at Crammont High School. He is seeking his first appointment to YAC. And lastly, is our alternate, Liam Tierney. Liam is a sophomore at St. Francis High School. And before we swear in our new members, I would like to recognize our retiring members. We have Sakina Bambot. She was our chair this past school year. She will be attending Berkeley in the fall, so thank you so much for all that you've done for YAC these past few years. We also like to recognize Carissa Wong, who is unable to attend tonight. And lastly, I would like to thank our current members for coming here as a symbol of support. We have Veronica, Isabella, Genevieve, and Luke here as well. So, with that, I would like to ask council to swear in our new members.
Thank you, Caitlin. Do we need... I think we need to do a motion of approval first. So, unless staff... Pardon me, unless the dais has any questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to reappoint Ezra Bergson-Michelson and Lorna Simakova as voting members to the Youth Advisory Council for the 2019-2020 term, appoint Maya Devalcher-Vuvu... Sorry. And Sebastian Fuen as voting members of the Youth Advisory Council for the 2019-2020 term, and to appoint Liam Tierney as an alternate on the Youth Advisory Council for the 19... Excuse me, 2019-2020 term.
Is there a second?
Second.
Before we move on, I actually did forget to ask if there was any public comment on this item. I don't have any cards. If anybody wishes to comment, since this is an action item, seeing nothing, then we will move on. If any discussion or...
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to say that I appreciate the opportunity Caitlin provided me. I think it was just about a year ago, you did a round of interviews. And I want to say again that my faith in youth was resoundingly restored in that, in those processes. In the world we live in today, with all the things you see on TV and the negative, really the negative things you see, it's nice to see our youth who love the city, who feel safe, and want to participate in what goes on in our Youth Advisory Council. So, that's a credit to you and it's a credit to our kids. So, thank you.
All right. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Palmer-Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Great. Motion carries unanimously. Crystal, I take it you'll be doing the swearing in? Thank you.
If you can raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties for which you're about to enter? Say I do. Okay? Come on up. Here. Thank you. Sebastian? Laura, no, that you're not Laura. Liam. Congratulations.
So, we'll move on to the next item, which is going to be item number 10. We're taking that out of order. Reports to council. Reports... We have one item tonight under that. It's a report to council with a status update on the city's housing strategic work plan. Good evening, Al.
Good evening, Chair, members of the City Council. So, tonight, the desired outcome of our meeting is to receive some input on our strategic housing work plan. And I'll be providing an overview of this work plan for you this evening and for housing in the coming years. Martin Romo, our Housing and Economic Development Manager, is here and he'll be able to answer some questions, as will I. Tonight, we're looking to provide you with this overview and receive any guidance where necessary, again, by the council or the public on this plan. So, the overarching housing goal and objectives that you see here on the screen were developed at a City Council Strategic Planning Meeting earlier this year. And you may recall, as part of the study sessions that we did with you in April, that we touched on some of the strategies and how to achieve these objectives. And really, for any city, there really isn't any one way to achieve any kind of an approach for workforce housing issues. And as a result, what we've tried to do here is divide these, this work plan into short, medium, and long-range goals. And these goals, I think, are robust and it's a multi-pronged approach to achieving these objectives. So, what I'd like to do this evening is I'm going to start with just sort of an overview of some of the issues that we've identified and some of the objectives that we've identified and talk a little bit about them. And then, we've also developed this process illustration for you that to help everybody visualize what we're talking about. And I'll talk a little bit about that in detail. And that outlines some of the specific things that we'd like to take a look at and that you've asked us to look at, and also some timelines for that as well. So, let's start here under short and medium-term goals. Senate Bill 2 is a bill that we recently became aware of. And what this bill is, it's called the Building Homes and Jobs Act, and it provides housing funds for cities that are looking to improve housing supply and to support local efforts to increase housing supply. And we found that our city is, we could get up to $160,000 for this, and this will help us with planning efforts in the coming months and years. In terms of community engagement strategies, these initial efforts will provide the groundwork for a comprehensive report documenting the engagement outcomes and recommendations. And staff will work with the City Council. We'd like to work with the City Council Housing Subcommittee on this as well. The accessory dwelling unit ordinance updates includes updates to the state regulations. So, the state recently changed ADU regulations. And we'd like to bring our ordinance up to speed with that and make some zoning adjustments. We'd like to look at unit size and some design considerations as well. Our below-market rate ordinance needs an update as well. And this will include a comprehensive review to analyze some changes, again, to state regulations and look for other best practices in below-market rate ordinances. So, here's where we start to look at our illustrative diagram. And you'll note at the lower right-hand corner of those boxes there, you'll see some dates. And what we tried to do is come up with some dates that we feel reflects the work that we can... When we can start some things and when we think we can complete some things. Some of these objectives, it may change over time as we get into the actual planning and development of some of these programs. Some of these things may change. So, it's... These are estimates, but we wanted to give people some idea of when we could start and how long these things would take. So, talking a little bit more about SB 2 in that left box there, it requires a council resolution for us just to apply for this grant and to receive those funds. And so, we anticipate getting this to you, this resolution, by July 8. So, we'll do it before your summer recess. And we believe that this grant could be used to augment what we're doing in terms of some of the longer-term issues with our general plan and zoning. You can either augment that or you can maybe use it to offset some of the costs. We, we're looking at other cities and what they've done, and we think that we can have a very effective community engagement strategy. And so we will need to hire a facilitator to help us better understand those concerns and work with the city staff. Facilitators should be on board by summer 2019, and community meetings, we anticipate, would start in fall of 2019, and with completion in fall of 2020. Still with medium and short-term goals, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance update will begin in summer 2019, and this update should be complete by the end of fiscal year 2019-20. And this would follow review by the community at the Planning Commission and City Council public hearings that we'd be having on this issue. The BMR ordinance would be updated in the 2019-2020 timeframe, and this would be presented to council and Planning Commission as well. For this project, we will be looking at a number of different things, like fee waivers for affordable projects, levels of affordability, percentage requirements, alternative compliance methods, and we know that the council, when we talked over the mid-year budget, the council was interested in bringing forward fee waivers, excuse me, and so we think we can bring that forward in the near term, maybe before you go on summer break. Moving on to long-term goals, the city's general plan and zoning code will be evaluated for opportunities to make regulatory adjustments that reduce constraints to the creation of housing units and to incentivize their production. And for many years, the city has offered funding assistance for housing nonprofits, and we'll review funding levels with the City Council for that. Our housing element will need to be updated by 2023, so that's coming up, and that's always a, a very significant effort by any city. And there's about 200 housing bills on the horizon, and we would need to, we think it would be a good idea to continue to track those housing policy updates and update you on how they could potentially affect our city. In terms of long-term goals, for the general plan and zoning standards update, we've included some early discussion points on strategies to increase housing supply, and this isn't an exhaustive list that you see on the left-hand side of the screen, but these were identified during our study session. Some of these issues were identified at that time. And we will also need assistance from a consultant, as we noted in our mid-year budget, and this work is planned to take up to two years, but I think we'll know more about the timeframe and if we can shorten that timeframe, once we get started. And again, for that notice of funding availability, staff will begin reviewing the grant limits for the housing assistance program before the 2020-22 budget, or for that budget, for your consideration. And as I noted, per state law, the housing element will need to be updated by 2023, and we've recently learned that some of the new legislation that's been adopted and coming forward for housing elements is going to make them much more challenging for cities to update and conform with the state's requirement. And we hear that the, the governor's office is, is actually hiring a lot more people in order, just to review housing elements, and so we see this as a very rigorous process on the horizon. Over the next few years, we'll continue to track those state bills, as I noted, and as an ongoing effort, we need to make sure that we understand how those policies could affect our general plan and zoning and other things we're doing in our community. And it's also important to pursue grant funding and other supportive resources to help advance our housing goals. So this is what it looks like in its entirety, and this is just a draft of this illustration at this point. We'd like to take your, your input and, and refine it if necessary. What we'll do is, once we, we have a better feel for the final version of this, we'll maybe put up a better-looking version on our city's website. We'll develop a website. We'll have linkages back for the community for all the information that we gather and all the plans that we're working on, so that everybody has access to this information. And so with that, we are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Good as always. Before we do questions, I'm going to do something that we've done a couple of times before in this regard, with this topic, which, based on a conversation Ron and I had earlier in the week, I think we may try doing in general on all topics, and that's to have public comment and questions before we ask questions of staff and before we have our discussions, and sometimes those influence the questions that we get asked. So if there's anybody who wishes to address the council or on this topic, I have one card from David Pollack. It's a two-minute time window. There's, you know the drill, David. If there's anybody else who wants to address us on this topic, please feel free to fill out a card. Good evening, David.
Good evening, Chairman, or Chair, Mark. Thank you, council, for hearing me out tonight. I commend the council for maintaining a focus on its strategic, focus on housing and its strategic planning. This is why I was so looking forward to the status update on city's, city's housing strategic work plan. I find this update, however, to be a little bit, little more than going through the motions on an academic exercise. If everything goes according to plan, we'll update the housing element by 2023. Yippee. San Carlos has an amazing staff, which goes above and beyond on so many fronts, but when it comes to housing, they're just, frankly, don't seem to be up to the challenge. I urge the council to provide stronger direction. Furthermore, the city should immediately issue guidance to developers, sending a clear signal that proposals incorporating creative approaches to housing will get higher consideration. Some council members and virtually all staff seem to be of the mind that developers will balk at such a request. That's just not the case. There are plenty of recent examples of developers stepping up to the challenge throughout the Bay Area. San Carlos can maintain an economic, can maintain economic growth while simultaneously addressing the jobs-housing balance. For starters, the council can prioritize community benefits for major projects. I know that RENA is total garbage, but as a city, we need to start somewhere. I urge the council to direct staff to develop a strategy to achieve by 2023 the development of the remaining housing units that prescribe deeper levels of affordability. Meeting RENA numbers is not a meet-and-done goal by any means. At the very least, it's better than simply going down a checklist for updating the general plan. Finally, a well-considered community engagement program faithfully executed is integral to the community's success in housing. Left to their own devices, staff is on a course to make matters worse. Community engagement needs to be shepherded by council members who have been involved in the Home for All initiative and hold a greater respect for its value in order to develop a, a process that will work in San Carlos, which we need to develop on our own ahead of the Home for All initiative, who won't be able to get to our community for another year. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council on this topic? Okay, so let us turn back to questions for staff. Sarah.
Thank you, Mark. So I, I hear what you're saying about the Home for All program and that we have to wait our turn. I've heard so many glowing reviews and remarks about that program, so I'm sad that the timing doesn't work out a little bit better for us. Does Home for All use a consultant who we could ask to apply, so that we could have some kind of benefits of that program, even if it's not run for home, run by Home for All?
We're not aware that they use a consultant, per se. We think that they have their own people who are associated and, and, you know, work in their organization, and that's perhaps why they don't, you know, have more resources. They're just a, a group of people who do this, and, as a, as a business. So we would, we would like to do it with them as well. We've heard great things. And so, but we realize that there's a sense of urgency around this idea of community engagement, and so in looking at what some other cities have done without Home for All, we feel confident that we can put together a program with the right assistance that will develop the things that we need and, and listen to the community and record what some of the issues are. So it really depends on what council wants to do. I mean, we could wait for Home for All, but again, we're just, um, moving forward based on the sense of urgency that we've heard from the council.
Adam.
Thank you, Chair Olber. I had a few different questions for you, Al. Thanks for the presentations. Well done. So let me start, I'll go with the short-term, medium-term goals. On the ADU ordinance, can you talk a little bit about, we talked about a couple other issues, and I'm just wondering if we feel like this has to become part of the, one I would like to be part of discussion, one whether it should be, is, do we need to look at short-term rentals in our program around that, or lack of at this point, as we start looking at the ADU ordinance? And second to that, I had brought up about, bringing up around the, do we need to adjust and go back on discussion around the housing sizes with the FAR to potentially give some deference to people trying to build ADUs for the purpose of, really, of, of long-term housing? Because I think those are two things that I just, just want to get update from you on.
So I'll take the, I'll do the second question first, and yes, we do need to look at how FAR, how our single-family zoning code impacts the second units, and what we see right now is that it does, the way it's written in our code. So we do need to address it. We think that we can bring the ADU ordinance, again, it's a short-term program, and we think that we can move on that pretty quickly, and we're, we're already starting to work something up for the Planning Commission and council to look at. On the first question, do we need to look at short-term rentals in association with ADUs? That's a, a difficult question. I think that it opens up sort of another can of worms that's, that may be very complicated and sort of separate, to some extent, from just the creation of ADUs, which I think that the intent of the ADU ordinance and state regulations are to do. So I think that we need to think carefully about kind of merging these two issues together. Perhaps if they're, if they're separated and maybe city managements and the council has some discussions about what it means to approach the short-term rental issue, it gets into, you know, people's income and, and some other pretty significant personal issues that might complicate the ADU work that we need to do. So that's just...
And that's a fair comment on that. I guess my, as I, I see them linked in the question of if we're going to make some changes to the FAR to give more flexibility, to me, I'd like to give more preference towards long-term units at that point, because that's really sort of the, to me, the big thing hanging out there, that's, that's a, can help and is a challenge.
And may I respond?
Of course.
To add on to that? You know, there may be things that you could do in the ADU ordinance that, like deed restrictions and things like that. There may be thresholds that you put in that say, hey, if you want this much, then you have to put in a deed restriction that it, it's only occupied by long-term renters and things like that. So you may be able to get around the short-term rental issue without kind of addressing it in that way.
Okay, that's a creative way to look at it, so I appreciate that. And then can you, and this is sort of on a couple of things, we talked about consultants. Do you have a sense of sort of the, I mean, this is a priority issue for us, and I'm not, but in terms of the cost around some of these things, and to do the community engagement strategy and everything, have you sort of thought ballpark where we are on that?
Yes, so in particular, for the community engagement strategy, we, we didn't approach you with a mid-year budget program, because we believe that we have enough in our professional services budget, and potentially, if we get this grant of $160,000, some of that money can be used to augment the engagement services. But we think that that service would be a much lower contract than some of the other major ones that we've talked to you about. The, the general plan and zoning update, which was $800,000, is, you know, this would be a much less significant part of that. So I think that we, we have it covered with, with our professional services budget and potential grant funding, and we'll come back to you with that.
Great. I'll, I have more questions, but I will let others jump in if I can come back in another round.
Sure. Laura.
Thank you, Chair. So I just want to acknowledge the comments made earlier. I recognize that the situation is dire with respect to housing. Couple of examples that I've learned about recently, I met a woman who's an admin coordinator who works up in South City and lives much further afield, waking up at four o'clock in the morning to van-pull with people and arriving at work two hours later. In addition, I saw some data on Facebook, I don't know how valid it is, but it was shared by a couple of people, that suggested that teachers are getting pushed further out, out, so the affordability for them, and I know that we're, again, losing teachers this year because of the housing situation. So, you know, I know it's not fast enough, and I, I wish that we could build all the units we could today that we need. I'm, I want to thank staff, because I know this is a really complicated situation, and I felt the timeline that you put together and distilling down all of the various activities that we talked about in a very clear manner, was very helpful to me to understand how you're thinking about that and how you've incorporated all of our feedback, and I know that's not an easy task, so I really appreciate that. Thank you. Couple of things that I just keep, keep coming up in my mind about this. One is the fact that, you know, there's an economic issue associated with developing these units. So we have limited trust money in our trust, and I know that we're looking at activating those funds in a meaningful way. Would there be an opportunity to maybe consider a couple of additional activities, and I'll leave it, and, you know, I'm open to your feedback on this, but as part of that engagement strategy with the community, could we, could we also incorporate maybe doing some stakeholder discussions with developers? Maybe, you know, to the public comment, David's point earlier, you know, who are these organizations and kind of what could they bring to the table, and could we have that dialogue to better understand, are there opportunities that we're not aware of, where they're willing to come in now and help us get to the, to the, you know, start building those units? Could we also consider maybe partnerships with other cities? I go to meetings, after meetings with Home for All, it's talked about it, all these other government organizations where, you know, the fact that this is a regional issue, could we potentially look at maybe, you know, partnerships? I'm just brainstorming here off the cuff, based on the discussion that we're having. And then also, too, on this ADU ordinance, so again, a, a person who was kind of mid-30s, left to go to graduate school, five and a half years later came home and couldn't afford to any place to live, right, with multiple degrees and a very well-paying job, was sharing with me that her, her other half was trying to identify, like, bring in a mini-house or a micro-house, and the particular city didn't have any, the ordinance was silent on that. But these are, you know, little trailers that pull up that are very efficiently designed. I'm just wondering, maybe if, as part of the ADU review, would we maybe want to include something... we're not aware of, where they're willing to come in now and help us get to the, you know, start building those units? Could we also consider maybe partnerships with other cities? I go to meetings, after meetings with Home for All, it's talked about it, all these other government organizations where, you know, the fact that this is a regional issue, could we potentially look at maybe, you know, partnerships? I'm just brainstorming here off the cuff based on the discussion that we're having. And then also too, on this ADU ordinance, so again, a person who was kind of mid-30s, left to go to graduate school, five and a half years later came home and couldn't afford any place to live, right? With multiple degrees and a very well-paying job, was sharing with me that her, her other half was trying to identify, like bring in a mini-house or a micro-house. And the particular city didn't have any, the ordinance was silent on that. But these are, you know, little trailers that pull up that are very efficiently designed. I'm just wondering maybe if as part of the ADU review, would we maybe want to include something along that, which is a prefab house, right? That you pretty much pull up and hook up as a potential option. So I don't want to get too tactical, but I'm seeing kind of the financial piece as a key issue and then, you know, obviously trying to land and where are the developers, right? Do we have any in our pipeline that, again, maybe council's not aware of, but people who have expressed interest in building some affordable units in our community?
Okay. Chair, may I respond to those? Thank you. With regard to your question about developers and the financial aspects of the creation of affordable housing, that's absolutely something that we can and should do. And it's always important to get a reality check from the development community for anything a city does, including zoning and general plan changes, because sometimes cities might do things that are impossible from a financial feasibility standpoint. So yes, absolutely, we can do that. Other city partnerships, we can all, we can look for ways to partner with other cities as well. I think that's a very viable opportunity. We, you know, it's interesting because we, it's just the conversation around affordable housing regionally and with cities and counties and policymakers is just incredible, the amount of things that are, the discussions that are happening. But some examples of these types of things where you're, where two cities want to partner on this, you just don't hear or read about. So it's a very unique question, and I think we certainly can look at that. And maybe if it doesn't exist, think of ways that it could. In terms of the tiny homes and ADUs, those are, I believe that you could do that in the city of San Carlos, even under our current ADU, as long as you conform to the building codes and things like that. So tiny houses are something that we've been reading a lot about lately, and that's another viable possibility for our community. And so all of these ideas are things that we will and can look at.
Thank you.
Ron.
Thank you, Mark. Great presentation, Al. You know, this is, we finally have a roadmap. And as someone who has been sitting on this council for nearly eight years and was kind of the only housing guy from the beginning, it's nice to see that we have this and we have a path that we can go on. So I, for one, think that we've made great progress. I know we have a long way to go, but there was a lot of inertia for a while. And as you know, this council's completely behind you, and I just appreciate all the work you and your staff are doing. I think you guys are, you're well on the way, and we're going to see some good results come out of it. So a couple of comments, and then I'll have some questions for you. You know, I've been part of Home for All for like, since its inception, four years ago. When I started, the jobs, housing imbalance was 25 to 1. As of today, I went to a SAMCDA meeting and they, I think they said that we are now down to something under 12 to 1. It might even be less than 10 to 1. So there's great progress being made. And I think Adam asked it, you know, who is, who are we going to have help us out? Because I know Home for All uses frameworks, they do a great job, but as, you know, we all understand, we're pretty far down the list on, for them. So I assume that we've got some other options that we can use that know how to do these, these community engagement meetings and get the most out of them?
Yeah, we're hoping for that. And we know that there are some groups out there that are experts in community engagement. And we know some people, and, you know, some of them are just really good at community engagement, but they may not be great at housing. So it's kind of how to merge those people together, and we're going to look for those people and maybe put some people together to make it work. And again, we've seen some other cities who have done it without groups like Home for All and done it very well, and so we can use them as examples. So it's right at this point, we're very hopeful and cautiously optimistic on this, and we'll see who we can put together.
Okay. And of course, you know, it was brought, the topic was brought up with working with other cities. I would assume that as more funding becomes available, I know I was part of HART for the last seven years, Sarah now has taken over for me, but I'm, hopefully that there might be some HART money at some point that we might be able to tap into. I'm sure you've probably explored that. Then the other thing, just quickly, on the SB2 grant money, how are we going to use it? Are we, are we use that for, is it hire more staff or hire consultants? How exactly are we going to use that, assuming we get the grant money? What are your plans for it?
The intent of the grant money is to help cities pay for the cost of consultants to do studies, just like we're doing on our long-term general plan and zoning ordinance update. We could use it for that. So we said that it would be approximately $800,000. So you could either use it potentially to buy that cost down, or augment that cost, or look for some other place to put it, as long as, although it does have to conform to our application. And so we know that we're embarking on this big housing policy exploration. And so we believe that it would be most relevant in the general plan area. It's perfect timing for our city. And so we will come to you, but that's the application. We'll come to you with a resolution in short order, and we'll have the application attached to it, and it'll explain kind of what we're doing. But that's what I think we can use it for at this point.
You know, I've come in to see you several times, as has Mark and the other council members, about, you know, what's going on. So, and, but the public doesn't see that. And so my question is, I don't expect an exact number, but can you give me a rough guess as to, you know, how many applications you're looking at and some of the approaches you've had from developers who are, who want to build more housing? Do you have, do you have a number in mind that we haven't seen yet?
Martin can talk about numbers, but I can tell you that we, since we have pushed back in terms of the in-loop payments and said that the council and the city is really interested in the construction of units as opposed to paying the in-loop fee, more and more developers are looking for ways to make it work and make it pencil. And many developers, particularly some of the newer developers that have been starting in the last few years, weren't aware of a lot of potential availability of usage of state regulations or even local ordinances, like the state density bonus. And we even have our own density bonus program. And so it's been talking with these developers that have to do it and say, hey, have you looked at this? Have you looked at that? And some of them haven't. And when they do, it's like a light bulb goes on. Now, when these ordinances and regulations are used, it does have a physical impact on these development projects. And what I mean by that, for instance, is the state density bonus says that a developer providing, if you build more unit, you can get more units, one, overall market rate, two, if you provide more affordable or a certain number of affordable housing units at a certain affordability levels. It will also give the developer concessions on zoning standards and height and things like that, and parking regulations. And some of those are by right. So some developers have discovered they could go to 60 feet, where our height regulations say only 50 feet. They, by law, the city is required to approve 60 feet because they went through the state density bonus. So these are some things that we will be seeing in our community. Some developers are coming forward with extra floors in order to build those units. At the same time, we are getting more affordable units as a result and more lower levels of affordability. So there's some trade-offs there that we will be seeing, a number of these applications coming through in the next year or so. So I'd say there's probably a half a dozen projects in our community right now that are going to be required to build affordable housing units in their development projects. And some of them, I'd say maybe a third to a half of those are going to be using either our density bonus ordinance or the state's. And Martin, did you have anything to add to the numbers or anything on that? Does that sound about right, or? Yeah, okay.
Okay. And then, well, then you answered one of my questions before I was even going to ask it, and that was the whole issue about height limit waivers. But now though, you've been, it sounds like you've been educating these, these developers, and that really changes the whole conversation, doesn't it?
It has. And again, seeing the look on their faces when you tell them about this stuff, and they call you back and they go, okay, here's what we want to do. But again, there's trade-offs. And we do have good design guidelines and good design sense and design review through our planning commission. So even if they were allowed to go to a, you know, higher building, we would try and make it, make sure that it blends into the community as best we can.
Well, and that's also a conversation that we as a council need to have with the community as to how much, you know, height, you know, people are going to tolerate. And, and they need to know that in some cases that they're, if they want more housing, they're going to have to tolerate some more height. So the last question I have. So one of my passions for a long time is that, you know, El Camino Real, and that corridor is ripe for mixed use and transit-oriented development and that, and that sort of thing. So I had a conversation with a developer who told me that a lot of those businesses along El Camino are just too small, that you would need to aggregate them. So I'm wondering, is there, are there things that we can do as a city to sort of encourage that aggregation? I realize that we're still dealing with a private market, we have limited funds, but I'm wondering, how can we sort of get the message out that we would, we would be receptive, I mean, assuming the council, the rest of the council agreed with me, but that we would be receptive to, A, not only more height, but property aggregation of, you know, contiguous properties so that we could get that mixed use, get some retail and commercial and residential along, along the corridor? Because, you know, as I mentioned earlier, Samtrans' revenue from their bus operations is, is not as robust as it was. And my feeling is that you've got to bring more people closer to, you know, transportation, and this is just an ideal opportunity. So I'm just wondering, what sort of opportunities do we have there? What can we do with respect to, you know, encouraging more development along El Camino and bringing that, that vision into focus?
We do have those conversations. Knowing that the council is, you know, supportive of that is helpful to some extent. But we do often ask when a developer comes in with a pre-application, they just want to talk to planning staff about zoning and things, we, we often ask, well, did you look at this? Did you look at that? And, and so we do have those conversations regularly. You know, there's the marketplace, right? And how much do you pay for the land is very expensive and those kinds of things. And some developers just, you know, don't want to, you know, they, they can't or, or don't want to acquire those properties. But that developer, what they told you is correct, that some properties are just too small to make economic sense to develop with parking regulations and other things. So you do have to have some kind of a landmass that makes sense from a dollars and cents standpoint. So yes, we can have those conversations and continue to have those conversations. And then if the city does own property in these locations or acquires property through its housing funds that we will, you know, be building up over the years, then we could be someone who goes out and asks to be a partner with a developer, and we've done that a number of times very successfully. So that's another option for the city. And I think you'll, because of the commercial linkage fees that the city will be getting over the years, you will have the ability to become a player in the marketplace to create housing through partnerships.
So if you had the direction from us, say, using strategic property acquisition funds, you know, that reserve, and we add to that with, you know, linkage fees and that sort of thing, then we could probably speed up that process.
Yes. And going back to just one other thing, is we did do a opportunities list of projects or properties that we thought would be good opportunities for future development of housing. And we did develop those, and we will be looking at that with the housing subcommittee. And, and so there are potential sites that we've identified as good sites to redevelop for housing and that kind of thing.
Great. Thank you. And great work. Thanks.
Adam, why don't you continue your questions?
So I guess, a couple of things. So one, I think on the, I would just chime in on the Home for All piece, if, I mean, I don't want to wait, I'd rather move forward with, you know, somebody comparable or someone who can do the job as well. So you can mark me down for that. In terms of some of the short-term goals and long-term goals, medium, can you just clarify, Al, in terms of, you know, you've got sort of your start date and end dates, is that sort of your intention, like when that sort of list can be completed and some stuff might be done earlier? As part of that, maybe, maybe particularly in the long-term goals, that might be the case, like we could deal with minimum density requirements before we did some of the zoning changes or SEQA changes or things? Can you just clarify where, on the short-term and long-term, if that's the case?
Yes, some of them are, particularly on the short-term things, they're more precise than some of the longer-term ones are. We know how far we've gotten on some of those projects and when, when we can get some of these things to you. For instance, the fee change for below-market rate housing and things like that, the ADU thing we've been working on. So we know these are more precise. But some of the longer ones that we haven't even, you know, talked to our consultant or got someone on board, we can refine those dates and, and sort of milestone events throughout the process as we get somebody on board and start working together as a team. So, and if the council wanted to do something in particular as we, as we report back to you progress and things like that, you could say, hey, I want you to bring this particular issue to us faster in this process. That's certainly something that we can look at. Normally, what we would do is we would, we would bring a whole package of things to the council, right? And we do it like that. But again, so again, yes, we can break out pieces as we go forward, and some of them we might say, hey, yeah, this one we should do right now, get out, get out in front of it, and we can do it. Some of the, when you change zoning or general plan stuff, it requires SEQA analysis. That's one of the big monkey wrenches in the whole thing, is that, that's a very involved, time-consuming process, and you're legally required to report potential impacts to the public. And so you kind of can't circumvent the SEQA thing, and that's why it's challenging the state of California sometimes to get things done. So we would have to kind of look at all those pieces together. But I think I, I think I hear what you're saying. Yeah.
And that's, that's great. I appreciate that. And then thanks for putting the timeline together. I think that's really helpful to have a visual to be able to kind of look through that and see where we are and maybe pick and choose some things that might rise to the top that we want to push a little harder over time. So thank you.
Before, before we move on here, and not from the item, just with this discussion, I'd like to ask, as we go forward here, if we can limit the interaction at this phase to questions, because in all, and it's, it's a gray area, difficult line to monitor, but a fair amount of what we've been talking about in the last 10 or 15 minutes is actually discussion stuff. And with all due respect for Al, as, one of my comments I wanted to make is, the discussion I really want to see between the council members of the DIAS, not with one council member and Al. It needs to be more amongst us. So I'd like to ask if we can try and limit this phase of the interaction literally to questions, and then have the discussion amongst ourselves. So I see we have some additional lights on. Sarah, do you have other questions?
I do. I have two questions.
Sure.
So this seems like there's just a lot of things to do. Do you feel like you have enough staff on your team to be able to manage doing all of these various things right now?
At this point, I think that we do. And so I think what we need to do is really embark on all this and see where we are at the next budget cycle. So that's what I'd like to do, is just attack this and get into it and then see where we are. But again, today, as of today, I think we're, we're good.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, do you, I feel like there's a lot of things that will help us achieve this, but do you feel like we should put meeting arena numbers as one of our goals?
Well, that's an interesting question. I think that we won't have a choice. I think that the next cycle for RENA is going to be coming up very rapidly. And with all that's happening with, in the state legislature, I think that the RENA numbers are going to increase for the city of San Carlos. It might double. It might double. And again, I haven't seen anything, but what I'm hearing is that the numbers are going to increase significantly county by county. And I think that the state may add some teeth, which have never been there before, and attach it to things, maybe funding, maybe other things. So I think that we're going to get our RENA numbers. And then the good news is, is that in the past, we've been able to talk to other cities within our county as what they call a sub-region. And so the RENA has allowed cities to get together and do some horse trading. I think that's still going to be part of it. So we'll have to kind of see. But I think we're going to be responding to RENA no matter what.
Thank you.
Laura?
Thank you, Chair. What is a, I just had it here, priority development area? And how does expanding that get us to where we want to go?
Okay. So let's start with the general plan. So what I put on the screen is a map of the city. And the area in that triangle, in the red area along El Camino Real and the train tracks, is our transit-oriented development area. And it was identified as such during our general plan process back in 2009. And what it meant is, the community said that, yes, we acknowledge that this is within a certain walking distance of the train and mass transit, and we're going to build most of our housing units, or a lot of our housing units, in this area. And so what, about that same time, a little earlier actually, the MTC and ABAG came out with a program called PDAs, or priority development areas. And what priority development areas this program did is, the regional agency said if a city identifies an area in their community near mass transit and says, yes, this is where we're going to have our higher densities for housing in our communities, and the council identifies it and adopts these maps as a priority development area, that will, then we will put you as a priority for funding for studies like we're doing today. And the MTC, it turns out, also puts you first in line for infrastructure funding. And so that's why the city at that time said, yeah, we were already starting to kind of look at our general plan, but these areas were identified because they're within a quarter mile or a certain walking distance of our train station and bus lines. And so that's what it does, is by identifying this area and mapping it out as we have, we were able to get lots of grant funding for studies in the past. We were able to get, the MTC gave the city 3.5 million to do the East Side Connect project, which improved the sidewalks and bike lanes and things like that. So that's what they're trying to say, cities, identify the area, and then we'll put you first in line for these funding resources. And it really did work. And what I think you're referring to is, one of the programs that we talked about, one of the bullet points was to expand, potentially expand this map that you see on the screen. And the idea would be that there may be other areas that we should include that have, for instance, apartment buildings like up on Chestnut Street and along San Carlos Avenue, a little higher, a few blocks up, maybe within a half a mile of transit, and expand the area. And this would expand our capability to get capital improvement funding and grant funding for studies in the future. So that's the intent of that bullet point.
So just in terms of a few questions, why hasn't the, an action to eliminate the INLU option, the INLU fee, come before us?
We're working on that. And we should have that to you in short order. So...
In all seriousness, why is it not just a matter of taking an action to strike a code section in our ordinances?
You know, it's possible that that's the case, but it could also be that we need to do some other administrative work and SEQA and that kind of thing. But we will be bringing it forward. And I understand the urgency around that.
How much cash is built up in the San Carlos Development Corp.? And how do we access it? What would be involved in accessing it?
I believe you're talking about the Elms? Yeah, I believe, and again, I'm just kind of, this is not a fund we control. This isn't money that's on our books. The San Carlos Development Corporation's separate entity that runs the Elms across the street. Last I heard, they had about $6 million on their books. It's unclear how we would access that money, with the primary obstacle being the HUD loans that secure the, that secured the construction of the facility have significant restrictions on them. Again, as I understand, this is a third-party entity?
Okay. You know, Jeff, because I was involved, working closely with you a few years ago, when a group of people on the former SDC board had come up with a plan for how to access the funds because they were going to do stuff that we didn't necessarily agree with. I just want to remind staff, this is the third time I've asked this type of question specifically on that. I would really appreciate an answer. And, you know, I'm trying to make a little point here that, yes, this really is an urgent issue. There are some small things we could do quickly. And if it turns out there are reasons why we can't do them quickly, that's fine. But if they can be done quickly, they should be done quickly. Moving sort of into discussion, the general comment that I wanted to make, and Al, I really do appreciate the work that you and your staff are doing sincerely. I really do. The problem that I have with the, when I look at this plan, is, I guess to put it bluntly, if we do all of the things that are in the short and medium term and we don't get the long-term things done faster, I think accomplishing the short and medium-term things would be irrelevant in terms of actual having an impact on the housing situation in San Carlos. I had lunch today with some folks who are much more intimately involved with the San Carlos School District than I am. And they were recounting to me like ongoing major tales of woe about more and more teachers leaving. The district is apparently looking at potentially between now and the start of the next school year, losing another 30 families. All of this stuff, actually not even indirectly, directly ties back to housing. It's a supply-demand imbalance. And I just, I know I've said this before, but I just want to remind everybody, the fundamental basis of, in all honesty, the value of San Carlos real estate, at least the residential stuff, it's the schools. If through some combination of things, however it ends up happening, if there becomes a growing impression that the school district is not doing well, which is a growing impression, by the way, it's not true, but it's a growing impression. You know, that nice $7 million budget surplus we had last year, we'll never see that again or unlikely to. We have to figure out what to do about the housing crisis. Now, we can't solve the entire regional thing ourselves, but I really believe that we need to be bolder about what our plans are, at least, and accept the fact that we may not accomplish all the plans because bold plans, you don't always get to. But, you know, I mean, some things that I've mentioned before, it's like, why isn't there something on this list that says evaluation of the city engaging in eminent domain transactions, self-liquidating transactions, where we have to find the capital to do it, but we buy land with a specific desire to say, we're going to make sure that housing gets built there, and we're going to make sure, by the way, that a lot of affordable housing gets built there. Why can't we do things like, can make, you know, adjust our commercial zoning rules so that, in order to put in giant projects in San Carlos, the developer has to be able to demonstrate that there's going to be housing built nearby, not necessarily in San Carlos, but someplace where it's relatively nearby. And I could go on and on with a bunch of other things. And I will guarantee you that a lot of the items on the list, there's probably all sorts of reasons why they can't work. But I honestly feel, guys, if we don't take some, at least have a bolder plan, we're never going to get there. And, you know, whatever we end up getting handed, or our successors ended up getting handed in the late 2020s, people probably look back and go, gee, I wonder why they didn't do more? And I don't know. I mean, what, we tried, but we didn't think that we could do more? And again, I'm not trying to attack staff, and I'm not trying to attack the very sincere desires that are here expressed by my colleagues, that they too want to see more done. But this plan, when I look at it, it's like, it's a nice plan, but the really important things are off in the future. They need to be brought forward. It's almost like the short-term stuff, if we get to it, that's great. Let's work on the longer-term stuff first. That wasn't provocative enough to get some comments made? Or are people just being polite that they don't want to say that they wildly disagree with everything I said?
I'll just throw in my two cents or my four cents. I think if you start coming up, I mean, I have no problem with bold plans, but it's also an interpretation of what a bold plan is. We've made so much progress in the last six or seven years, and people forget what that is. Yes, we have a crisis, but we have to look at things regionally, and we are making that progress. And my feeling is, if we start concentrating so much on long-term goals, we start tripping over the short-term goals and we lose sight of the low-hanging fruit and all the things that we are doing right now. We can have those plans. We can have those discussions. But we really have to focus on what we can do right now. Because we get too caught up in putting together a really bold plan that maybe developers are going to fight us on or sue us on, or it's going to take a long time to rezone or redo the general plan, we're going to miss opportunities that are right before us. And we have those opportunities. That's why I asked earlier, what's on the project list? You know, what's in the pipeline? Those things are in the pipeline. We are a little bit at the mercy of the state in that, you know, we can ask for more money. But I can tell you, having spent a lot of time on Home for All and on HART and dealing with county officials, there's a lot of state funding that is being put together, and there's even federal funding, and a lot of opportunities that we are going to be able to take advantage of. It's just that people can't see the progress right now because they can't see the plans. We've got a couple of projects that are going on. We're going to have a couple that are in the planning. And I would remind anybody who thinks we're not moving fast enough, there's a lot of people in this town who think we're moving too fast. We're getting a lot of pushback over Black Mountain and projects along El Camino that are planned and on Laurel Street. Even 817 Walnut, if I'm not mistaken, had neighbors complaining about, my word, you're going to build four stories. So I don't, you know, I think we need to, we just need to pay attention to what we're doing. We have a plan. Yeah, maybe we can make it a little bit more aggressive, but I really believe that we are making good progress. And I understand a lot of comments, but I do, I think we're making good progress.
Let me jump in and ask something because you've several times referred to this. Would you please cite for me, list for me, the number of housing units that have been built that you're describing as great progress? Because maybe the thing is that I don't understand what they are.
Sure. Transit Village, Wheeler Plaza. We just finished, there's a building finishing up at the corner of Chestnut and San Carlos Avenue. There's one next to it that just cleared the land, and they're going to be, I don't know when construction's going to start, but that's on the map. 777 Walnut is another one. We've got a couple of projects that are being proposed on Walnut Street across from Wheeler Plaza, another one on Laurel Street in the 1,000 or the 1,100 block. There's a few projects north of San Carlos Avenue on Walnut, if I'm not mistaken. So there are a lot of projects that are happening.
Numerically, those are a good number of projects. They are not, and I think we have a difference of opinion about significance. As you were citing those, I was rattling off and adding up in my head rough approximation of the number of units. That's probably about 500 units, okay, all told, which admittedly is, you know, a non-zero number. I just want everybody to remember that the trajectory that we're on, unless the economy permanently goes into the tank, is there will be likely in excess of 6,000 more jobs added to San Carlos in a decade, okay? 6,000 more jobs. That's the thing that, to me, is the basis of why I call it a crisis, okay? Is that I do appreciate that work has been done. And that's why I keep, I said to Al, I don't at all disagree that work is being done. But it's not commensurate with the scale of the challenge that we're at. And, you know, I would even, and I never thought I would ever say this, Rod, I would even go so far as to say, if we really can't see our way to building, to figuring out how to get more housing built, or at least so that it could be built, I'd almost rather tighten up our zoning rules so that the commercial development doesn't take place. Because, you know, balances have two sides, right? And that's not what my instinct is, but that's what I'd rather do. But anyway, I appreciate you explaining that. That's where we have a difference of opinion. You think that that's a very significant thing, perhaps by San Carlos history standards it is. I'm just looking at what's coming forward, and I'm going, it's not.
Well, you're right. It isn't enough. But here's the thing, we are one of 20 cities in this county. We're the fifth-largest metropolitan area in the country. We're not doing this alone. Belmont is adding housing. Rabbit City is adding housing. Burlingame is adding housing. All those, of those 6,000 jobs that we're going to provide at some point, not all of them are going to live in San Carlos. Some will live in some of the other cities. This is a regional problem.
Well, but yes...
We're not going to add 6,000 homes in San Carlos.
Well, I agree with that, and I have no desire to do that. I don't even know how we could do that. But please also remember, the commercial development is also taking place outside of San Carlos, too.
It is.
And in some respects, it's perhaps even more significant in some places than it is here. So yes, it's not like every one of those 6,000 jobs has to have a household in San Carlos, but it's also that there will be thousands of other jobs added up and down the peninsula as well.
There will be. And I would also add that if we stop commercial development, we are killing the golden goose. Where's our money going to come from? What money are we going to use to build that housing? If you kill commercial development, you kill community development money. You kill commercial linkage fees. You kill retail taxes. You cut off a lot of funding sources that we use to provide that housing. So I don't think that's a good idea.
I actually don't know that, from a cash flow point of view, much of that money actually goes into housing. And the other thing, frankly, as I said, that's not what I want to do either. But what I could see doing is, in some fashion, not exactly sure how we do it, basically put more of the onus back on the commercial developer, saying, somewhere, somehow, you have to make sure that more housing gets built, okay? And if you don't, then you don't get to build as big a project here as you want.
I don't disagree with that. But I don't think we do it by hammering on them and telling them, you have to do this, you have to do that. We need to ask them, what can you do? And we also need to give them incentives and say, we will do this. We will reduce parking fees. We will reduce, or parking requirements. We will reduce development fees. We will give you other incentives to do this.
I actually, I'm not sure I agree with that that's necessarily the way to do it going forward. Because I think that, you know, there's such a strong desire and such a hot market for commercial development right now, that I think we could press a much harder bargain than we do. I think the bargain that we've been pressing is one that historically applied when we had not been discovered, when the market was not as hot as it is. And put another way, part of my continuing coming back to saying, I really want us to focus on that longer-term stuff sooner, is I think we're fighting the last war, and I think actually we could cut a different set of deals and actually benefit the community more and not actually forego the development.
Sure. But don't forget, we had pushback on putting in commercial linkage fees, which have only been in force for what, a year, two years? We didn't have commercial linkage fees a few years ago. You know, we need not to lose sight of the fact that we have been moving in this direction for quite a while. The Transit Village was very instructive on the need for more housing. And this council... And this council decided not to build a bigger project, which we really should have built. We also allowed, as I recall, Wheeler Plaza people to write us a check. We learn from those experiences. And so now, as Al pointed out earlier, we've been educating these, these developers on what they can do. And I've, I've also talked to developers who are very willing to provide the housing, and they know how to do it, and they've said that they will do it if, if we make, if we also make some concessions, like allowing 60 or 75 feet on El Camino. I, you know, you're right, Mark, we, we do have a fundamental disagreement. I do think we're heading in the right direction, and I do think that we have put a lot of pressure on developers. But I also want to make sure that, again, we don't, we don't turn off that, that, that activity by being so heavy-handed that they, that they decide that they're going to move elsewhere, that they're going to go elsewhere. Other cities are working with these developers. They, they understand the need, and we also finally have some leadership in Sacramento that is now focusing on that. And I don't think we, we can lose sight of that.
So if I could just jump in here, a couple of things. One is, I want to make sure that we're clear about what the goal is, right? Saying we need more housing, we need more housing is like saying, I need to lose weight, I need to lose weight, but you don't ever set a goal, right? That weight just never comes off. I think that it's important that we do move expeditiously and intelligently at the same time. And I believe that we also need to bring the community along with us, because, again, the most recent survey data on this says that one-third of our population thinks that we're, we have too much development, traffic congestion is a big reason why they don't want development. We've already agreed that we're going to, you know, address those two things by engaging them. At the same time, they want us, and I believe it to be true, that San Carlos has something special about it, and we want to maintain the charm. We don't want to be like Redwood City. I heard you say that you want a big, huge project. I don't think that that's, I, I believe that I think we can get to the numbers with very clever and intelligent methods that will help maintain the charm of San Carlos. The, part of the community say, we also don't want to be Burlingame, a lot of, you know, branded retail stores, right? What, how can we do this in, in that way to maintain the balance? I believe that if you, you know, take a hammer and pound it hard on one area, it's, will likely throw things out of, out of balance. And I think that we, this is a nuanced and very complicated situation that the entire state of California has found itself in, and I do believe it's a regional opportunity for us to partner regionally, right? We have very little funds, we can't go out today and build a big project. We need to find money somewhere, we need to find land somewhere. We don't have those two things available to us. But what we can do is put policies in place that will help, you know, innovation to come forward, because people do recognize the need.
Are you, are you sure about those statements, that we don't have the money to be able to do something?
We have limited funds. These projects are wholly, very expensive. So if you're talking about a big box, like we see in Redwood City, those are millions and millions of dollars. And San Carlos in and of itself doesn't have, have millions and millions of dollars, you know, to the likes of those large-box projects on El Camino. I'd also suggest that, you know, California's at nearly full employment, so this idea that 6,000 people will move in to those buildings as soon as that they're built, I can tell you that there's, you know, office space that is rented and not used, not too far from here. So I think that we're probably, potentially at a place where we're reaching overcapacity right now in office space. I don't think we can make these claims that, you know, the end is near, right? I think, again, I think we need to work expeditiously, expeditiously and intelligently, and work within our community to maintain the character that we need, but find clever solutions. And I think short-order, short-term solutions and help increase that inventory are in order.
Well, I guess I'll respond to that by saying that, first off, if something I said said that I want to build giant buildings all over the place, I'm not sure where that came from. In fact, I was saying that-
Mark, I heard you talk about a big, big, bold project.
Laura, I didn't interrupt you. Would you mind waiting until I finish my comment, please? Please? Do you think you could do that? Thank you.
Mark, could you please be respectful?
I am. You're not being respectful by interrupting me that way. The building San Carlos into Redwood City is something I've never said or had an interest in doing. I'd also suggest that it's possible that we are thinking too small in the context of things such as self-liquidating acquisitions of property to trigger things, but done in a way that we get to have more of a say in terms of what's done. I also am well aware of, you may not be, but I'm well aware of, there are also properties inside of San Carlos that the city owns that could actually be monetized, I think is the right word, to do some of these things, to create capital to do stuff. And we're never going to actually, or it's going to be hard to get to the point of considering those things if we don't challenge ourselves with a bolder plan. That's actually part of the reason for having a bolder plan, because it forces you to think outside the box. It's always very easy to stay inside the box. So, and I'd be happy to talk to you about some of those things, as I mentioned, that you may not be aware of.
Well, then I'd just like to ask, maybe that we should ask that we have an inventory of those properties, and let's talk about them.
That would, fine with me. I think that was actually, I think I'd ask for inventory of that and inventory of things that we might potentially buy that could be of useful for residential developments. Both those inventories would be useful to have. Other comments or discussion? Okay. Staff, do you need any additional feedback, commentary? Not that you didn't get an awful lot? Okay? All right. Let's see. Yes. We are now going to go back to 9A, study session, discuss and provide direction on the role of commissions.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the City Council. Jeff Maltby, City Manager. At your, I believe it was January, it could have been February, mini-retreat, the council had asked for an item to be agendized to discuss their commissions and how the council interacts with them. There's a short staff report with some background information detailing some overviews of the various commissions that the city has. We've got a number of department directors here tonight who work closely with several of our key commissions, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have or interact with you in the coming discussion in any way that you find valuable.
All right. Go for it.
All right. Thank you. Jeff, we've had, what, 24, 25 people apply for a couple of commissions in the last couple of weeks, and before that, we had several more. It seems like the volume of people who are interested in serving on our commissions has dramatically increased in the last few years. Correct?
That's correct, but there's, there's a caveat associated with it as well. Typically, when we have commissioner openings, we'll do sort of the normal advertisement, and when we don't generate what we feel like is a sufficient candidate pool for the council to consider, then we'll look at doing something more extreme, like sending a postcard out, which is what has generated these really large numbers of interest that we've seen in the last couple of weeks. And then we had a similar iteration, I want to say it was a year or two ago, where similar thing, we had done a postcard. So it's, it's a, it's a yes and no answer.
Yeah. Because I remember a couple of times when we advertised, and nobody applied.
It's happened quite a few times.
All right. And then, and I don't know, maybe I'm under the wrong impression, I, these are mostly anecdotal comments that I've heard, is that the Citizens Advisory, not Citizens Advisory, the Citizens Academy has produced a lot more people who are more interested in what goes on in the city. Do you see, is there a correlation there?
I definitely see that, and, you know, talking with those folks, obviously, they're, you know, they already are exhibiting a willingness to give their time and energy to engage in civic life by, by joining the academy and spending the time to do that. So I think there's a correlation there. And then we have the opportunity to talk with them about the various opportunities that exist in the city, and to provide some sort of better understanding and base of knowledge for them, and what commissions do, and what role they, citizens in our community play in the governance of the community. So definitely seen a number of familiar faces across the interview tables from the academy sessions, which I think is great, and, and hopefully we'll continue to see. Though we are seeing a slowdown now in, in the academy itself in terms of participation and interest, which we kind of always assumed in the beginning, we would get to a point where we'd kind of cleared a backlog, and we'd need, you know, some new people and new interests and, and folks to reach a point in their life where they, they would have an interest in participating in the academy. So we do plan on continuing to do them in the future, but probably at a slower pace than two a year.
And so with all of this, you know, spirited talk of housing and planning and that sort of thing tonight, and, and recently, I'm wondering, when I was on the planning commission, it was a seven-member commission. And I'm wondering whether or not that is something that we might need once, once again. We've had a number of qualified applicants who have applied to it, we've got a lot of, a lot of things going on. I just want to get, I mean, your thoughts on that, and what that might entail, and how much, does it involve any more staff? How much more expense is it? Do you think it's even needed?
Well, I think I'd want to have the opportunity to, you know, thoughtfully look into those questions and get answers. I wasn't involved with the commission being shrunk from seven to five, so I'm not familiar with the, with the thought process of, of what was going on then.
It happened after I was off 20 years ago.
Yeah, so, you know, we could look into all that and, and have that discussion with, with more information if you'd like.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Sarah?
Thank you, Mark. I just wanted to kind of echo Ron's comments, that we had just so many amazing candidates that we've been interviewing lately, and I want to thank everybody who came out and applied. I wanted to propose an idea to my colleagues, which is, you know, given our experience of having all of these commissions kind of come up at the same time, whether we could consider having appointments and, everyone's appointment end in the same month, so that they could all potentially resign or term out, so that we could go, it would be a very busy interview season for us, but I feel like we interviewed so many people, and then we thought, well, that person was really great for this commission, but they'd also be really great for this commission. Or our second choice, we can only fill two on the Transportation and Circulation Commission, but our third and fourth and fifth choice were also standouts, maybe they'd be great on, you know, another commission. And so we had this huge pool this time that we went through of really amazing people, and I thought maybe it might be more efficient to consider using kind of a pool approach and filling commissions all at the same time.
That's an, that's an interesting idea. Thank you for explaining it, because I didn't initially get what you were dealing with. So what would happen then is, we sort of have a, a commission recruitment season, or a couple of months, or whatnot. Off the top of my head, I'm trying to think of issues that would, might have to be adjusted, or what we'd be balancing here. Off the top of my head, I suppose that creates the possibility of limiting a particular council member's ability to have an effect on the makeup of a commission, because depending upon when you, your term ends and whatnot, you either do or don't get to participate in that round of interviews. We don't actually schedule them that way now, it's just sort of by chance, it sort of happens. Personally, I, that aspect of it doesn't bother me. Yeah, it might be an interesting, I mean, what's staff's, did you talk to staff about this?
Jeff said he was going to think about pros and cons, so I'm interested in hearing his approach.
I did hear about this earlier today, so, you know, it's another one that knew was going to come up tonight, that, that I think we'd like to just be able to think on, and, you know, a lot of these, I can actually think of, right now, a lot of good reasons to do something this way, and, but, you know, oftentimes, there's these unintended consequences, so I'd like to talk with the full executive management team. And we knew we were going to hear from council tonight to, to get some initial reaction, and, you know, if there's some interest, then we'll, you know, we'll explore it some more, and then come back to you with what we think might be a workable plan, and, and, you know, what some of the pros and cons are. One element that I, you know, that I really want to think a little bit more about is, is how the reappointment process affects that, because that's always a complicating factor when folks are being reappointed as opposed to being re-interviewed. So, you know, again, I don't think it's necessarily an issue that would cause this idea not to work, it's just something that I think we'd want to build into the idea to make sure we didn't create a problem.
Can I ask, Sarah, just a kind of clarifying question on that? So you're talking about all the terms ending in, let's say, June, but you're still talking about them being necessarily staggered, right? Because you're not saying like, all five planning commission members would term out in same June, right? Because I think you want to have some continuity and some, you wouldn't want to have five new people potentially, or some insurance that you might have, some continuance on that?
Yeah, some would term out on 2020, others 2022, but it would all be in the same month.
Got it. Okay. Same month, I think. So from my end, I think it's worth taking a look at, then. I'm open to, you know, seeing what staff's reaction is and get some more feedback.
Why don't we treat it as an agendizing item? It sounds like there's enough interest to agendize it at some point. We don't need to discuss it, I mean, we can discuss it further, but do that. One question I actually had about direction on the role of commissions is something that has, had come up in the past on several occasions, and actually, Sarah, you're probably in a good position to comment on this from personal experience. I have fairly frequently over the years gotten feedback from individual commissioners that they find some level of frustration in that they, even though they are advisory bodies to us, and they, they understand that and accept it, that I, for lack of a better term, they, they wish they had more of an opportunity to sort of greenfield ideas, sort of, in part of advising us, sort of say, not just respond to, hey, we'd like you to look at this, but having them say to us, hey, we thought about X, we think you might want to think about it, or learn more about it. Does that make sense? And if so, as a, what's your view on that? What's your-
Thank you for asking. So I always thought of commissions as kind of a go-between, where ideas could trickle up from the community and go through the commissions and make their way up to council, and then also ideas trickle down from council to the commissions to review. So I think that that's, my, you know, my experience on EDOC was that we were able to do some of that work, to greenfield work, bringing ideas up, and, you know, hold really interesting roundtables on EDOC to kind of explore new and interesting ideas. But I'm not sure if that's, you know, what other commissions do at this point, which I was also going to ask staff. You know, I think that there's kind of a question of, you know, some commissioners not feeling like the work is meaningful enough. I've, I've heard that sometimes, so. I appreciated Stephen, in the strategic plan, you mentioned running a lot of the different objectives and deliverables through the Transportation and Circulation Commission, and I thought that that was really excellent, to actually put the commission in the strategic plan as a way of meeting the goals, because that looked like a lot of really meaningful, meaty work for that commission, and I appreciated that.
Yeah, the, the reason I brought, and I'd be interested in what other people's perspective on it is, because I've had conversations off and on with, with Jeff about this over the years, and there are, there are things that, I don't know that it would happen in San Carlos, but you can imagine a commission kind of getting a bit between its teeth and going off and doing a bunch of stuff that, that the council might be like, why are you guys spending so much time doing that stuff? We need, we have other things that need to get done. That is, that is a risk of what can happen. I am not too concerned about that, because I, first of all, I don't think it would happen in San Carlos, and second of all, if it did, I, you know, I presume we have the ability to rein in a commission by terminate, you know, basically saying, well, we're replacing some of the people on the commission. We can't do that casually, the majority of us has to agree to do it, but that is sort of a safety valve on it. So I guess the general topic is, you know, how does the council feel about, I hate to use this word, empowering commissions to be a little bit more, what was the term? Greenfielding ideas, doing some of their own work and sending it back through, back through staff to us, or, or whatnot? I don't know what other people feel about that.
You know, actually, the council used to rely on the commissions to do a lot of work.
Of that kind?
Well, a lot of things were handled through, through the commissions, and, you know, that, I think, I think we've sort of gotten away from that. So if there are, if there are areas where the commissions can take a greater role, and maybe- commissions can take a greater role and maybe vet some things that for some reason come to us more often than before, that would allow us to, you know, it's a good exercise in delegation. So it would allow us to, as you say, empower them, and it might make them a little bit more committed to, and a little bit more engaged and a little bit more creative to come up with ideas that they think might be of, you know, benefit to the community. So I, that intrigues me.
Okay.
I think we just have to be a little careful that the commissions don't get out in front of council on certain issues where they start running, running too far.
Yes, yes. I mean, they have to have limits.
I would trust staff to know, you know, how to rein that in.
Would it be, I think that's a really good point, and my comment about reining in things. I mean, actually, you don't ever want to get to reining in stuff. You'd rather not have it get out of control in the first place because that's, it's always. Would it be, would it be the sense of the council that we ask staff, based on what we've just been talking about, to come back with some suggestions about how we could augment, what was the term you used about sort of enrich what the commissions do, how we use the commissions, but do it in a way that deals with the issues Sarah was just mentioning, but not having them get too far out in front of us?
Yeah, I would like to see, you know, some, I'd like to see how they might be more engaged, more committed.
Engaged and committed, that was the term, right. And then ask staff to...
And without them, you know, subsuming what we do and making decisions that we should make.
Okay. Laura?
Thank you, Chair. So I actually kind of took it literally when the topic was role of commissions and came up with some specific things that I thought would be helpful to me as a council member. So I've, for all of the commissions, I would appreciate them supporting the current strategic goals and objectives in all of the work that they do as it relates to their particular commission to prioritize as current unfunded projects related to their areas. So we have a large list of unfunded projects. For EDAC, I thought it would be curious for them to maybe engage with the business community and Traffic and Circulation Commission to identify opportunities to mitigate the impact of commercial development and ensure San Carlos is hospitable to the business community, but yet that business community is also a good neighbor to the residents and to what effect that they could influence that. For Parks, Rec and Culture, we talk a lot about the parks and recreation part. We don't talk a whole lot about the culture, but I'm seeing a lot of really interesting models across the region of communities doing low-cost things to really bring out the culture piece of it to celebrate diversity, inclusion in their communities. For example, Belmont just did a poetry walk through their parks, which I thought was really innovative, engaging community artists, and I can't imagine from a cost perspective, that was really high. The Youth Advisory Commission, I had the good opportunity to present to that group and to hear they were here again tonight. Very impressive. I know one of the things that they've wanted is a skate park, and, you know, just given the budget constraints and things like that, I imagine that's what we would call a very long, long-term goal. So it would be fun to see them be able to kind of come to the community with something that they could actually implement. I observed at the ABAAG meeting last week, Oakland has a youth poet laureate who stole the show. It was the best five minutes of a five-hour meeting was when she got up and shared with us a very thought-provoking and inspirational poem. And with the Transportation and Circulation Commission, I'm really curious about some of the issues the residents have brought up with respect to the Black Mountain property and the addition of streets and the connectivity of potential streets. Perhaps they could help us with that, along with some of the more recent concerns residents have brought to our attention about safety issues and evacuating areas if there is a potential of a wildfire and what we do with our streets there. So to me, that would, that work would be meaningful to me, whether or not it's meaningful to the rest of the council. I'm, you know, certainly open to that suggestion, but just some thoughts.
Those were good thoughts. You spent a lot of time on that. That was good. You know, I think that, I don't know how we can be a little more informed on what the commissions are doing. I know that, you know, stuff trickles up to us, but EDAC just held a business roundtable with Laurel Street business owners, which is fascinating. And I don't know, unfortunately, those meetings aren't televised. They've done lots of great roundtables with the biotech industry and tech and a cannabis roundtable. They've done a lot of work reaching out to the business community. I'm wondering how that information can be shared and, you know, if there are these innovative things going on in the commissions, how that, how we can be informed.
Does staff have any suggestions on, I don't mean to put words in anybody's mouth, but how we can improve the communication of what the commissions are working on coming back to us?
Well, we could certainly, there'd be two approaches. You know, it'd be something that staff could add to their plate to do and communicate, or perhaps in the spirit of commissions and their purpose, perhaps it's something that the council tasks the chair of each commission to do, to simply maybe on a quarterly basis, so it's not overly onus, produce, you know, two or three-page report that would be included in a council packet if you want to spend council meeting time on it, or in the council newsletter, which goes out every couple of weeks as a reoccurring column where you would get a lot of commission input and update from the chair's perspective.
Just being, I actually like that idea. And maybe if you said something like, as frequent, they can write something as frequently as they want, but no less than quarterly. I mean, so if something comes up that's hot that they want to tell us about, I'd be, I certainly would be interested in that. I don't know if others would be.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. And I think if, even if it's, even if we got it at the council meeting just to receive it, so it was sort of a public document and out there, not necessarily, we don't have to act on it, just sort of receive the reports and don't need to do more than that, I think, unless there are specific questions, would be interesting. Can I add different?
Yes, I was gonna say, your light goes on.
No, I just want to say, I appreciate all the comments and the thoughts, and I agree. I mean, I've heard from a number of people about sort of the role of commissioners needing to be more meaningful, and I agree that we should look at some of these opportunities to do that. And I think it's, you know, both from us maybe driving, remembering sometimes when we're giving direction or we're coming up with new ideas to think about the commissioners and the commissions as part of that, just to remind ourselves too, that this is an issue that we probably can have the commissions look at as well.
Well, in fact, that, Sarah, because I want to, I don't want to forget or ignore the second part of what Laura said, or the part of what Laura said, which was a list of ideas. And I was filing that, Laura, under communication, we just talked about communication from the commissions back to the council, that sort of communication from the council to the commissions about what we'd like you to work on. And historically, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, we've sort of done that in the last few years episodically. It's just somebody on the council says, hey, why don't we have TNC look at this? And we go, okay, let's do that. We've never actually sat down and said, gee, what would we like input from EDAC and the Youth Advisory Commission and as your particular ideas were suggesting, and we'd like them to work on this stuff. It's more been, we're dealing with some other topic and it's like, well, gee, maybe we'll have a look at it. Perhaps there's a basis for us on some frequency, sort of sitting down and consciously saying, okay, we have a plan, a strategic plan for going forward. What things specifically would we like to, topics would we like to have the various commissions work on? That's just an approach. I'm not trying to say that we should absolutely do that, but I'm trying to figure out a way of incorporating which, not the specifics necessarily, but the idea of, is there a way of getting things assigned to the commissions? So.
Oh, correct me, maybe Jeff can correct me if I misremember, but it seems to me that, just take traffic, for example. Somebody had an issue with, with, you know, speeding on their street. They'd come to a council meeting and complain, or, no, they, excuse me, they used to go to the traffic commission and they'd bring it up there and the traffic commission would tackle it. And eventually, if there were any structural changes that needed to be made, they came before the council. And somewhere along the way, we had a lot of people starting coming to council with their complaints. And so now we were sending it back to these commissions. And to me, that was, and it took a lot of, I think maybe it took more staff time for, when it was coming back through us, because now we were adding things on to it. If I'm misremembering, please, please correct me.
Well, I don't, I don't think you're misremembering. The, you know, the world used to work that way, where, you know, we had very few council subcommittees, you know, council members would often make decisions even on large issues that they'd only ever seen once or twice at a council meeting because things were worked on at commissions. But about 16 years ago, those little suckers on the walls went in and things changed with the advent of, and maybe it's just a coincidence, but I was here and that was right, it's sort of at the beginning of my tenure with the city, and there was a very big shift between the commissions sort of dominating the workload and the council dominating the workload. And for the last 16 years, council members have wanted to be very involved from soup to nuts in terms of the process of how things move along. And there's no right or wrong answer to this question. It's just a different approach. As that happened, we started to have more council subcommittees. We started to have more strategic planning meetings, more retreat meetings with the council. More of that began to happen, and as a result, there was less and less for commissions to do and engage on. And we have over the years, this isn't the first iteration of this particular item in the council to kind of struggle with, what do we do with our commissions to make it more valuable and productive for our commissioners and our community as a whole? We've invited them to participate in strategic planning processes before. We've gotten light attendance. We've at times had joint meetings and that, you know, nothing's really worked out. My latest thought here is maybe, you know, in addition to the council, as was pointed out, there's always going to be items that come up and, you know, I've seen this council be pretty good at saying, oh, yeah, we should have the commission work on that and come back to us. So definitely continue to do that because that's valuable. Maybe as part of our mini-retreat that we do at the beginning of the calendar year in preparation for the big strategic plan, we should have commissions as a standing item that we talk about. And then perhaps while we're having a mini-retreat, we might ask our, the department heads who work most closely with commissions to have a mini-retreat with their commission so that they can have, what was the term, greenfield ideas, so that, you know, just before you have your big strategic planning retreat, you can also see their input and their ideas to consider as part of the whole enchilada so that we're not, you know, it's not always helpful if we're getting, and ideas will always come up when we have big projects and commissions are working on things, but if we're going to have one big idea generating time of year, that's the time, you know, where you can really build it into the strategic plan, get it built into the budget and begin to work on it in a process that's manageable and doesn't have us all sort of, you know, reacting in eight or nine different directions at once. Just a thought off the top of my head.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
I think I'd...
I like that idea.
I think back now, I was lucky to be on the Planning Commission before there were TV cameras.
Sarah, did you have something?
I have another question, but I can wait.
Oh, yeah, just hang on a split second. So, because again, I want to close the loop on Laura's comments. So I personally don't, I've been, I don't, and I don't even think it's up to the council. I personally don't have any problem with the ideas you suggested, Laura, in you sharing those with the commissions for them to think about whether or not they want to take them up, okay? Because implicit in the structure that Jeff just described, you'd sort of have to wait till next January to do that, and I don't really see a reason to do that. I mean, I think people should be free to suggest whatever ideas they want to whatever commission they want. You're not speaking for the council. You're speaking for yourself, but so what? That's okay. You're just sharing an idea to see if somebody's interested in pursuing it.
So I appreciate what you're saying.
Sorry.
Well, so at the League of California Cities Training, and maybe this is a question for you, Greg, they made it really clear that council members are not to direct the work of staff or community members. So I don't know, per Mark's suggestion, how that plays out, but...
May I leap in there before you leap in, Greg? Just to be clear.
I'm sorry, Mark, I asked Greg. So Greg, if you wouldn't mind going ahead and answering the question, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Well, I've seen it, I mean, it's not that under the law, I think that's probably best practices, what the League of Cities is talking about. You definitely are not allowed to direct staff, but as far as commissions that are within your purview, it's sort of a best practices thing, whether or not council members attend a meeting. That we have liaisons technically, I believe, still, and you can go to the meeting and participate in a way as an individual council member. But that's sort of a policy thing. Do you want to do that or not? Do you want, do you want to have council members promoting their individual ideas at commissions or not? So I think, I think the best practices part of it is if you have five, you know, theoretically, you could have five different council members going to the different commissions and giving different directions. So that can sometimes be a problem.
What I wanted to clarify or remind folks, I was by no, was not at all saying that any council member should direct commissions to do anything. That's, in fact, what I said was share ideas. Sharing an idea is sharing an idea, and Greg can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think trying to limit that would actually probably be impeding the free speech rights of a council member.
Well, that's why it's not, it's not prohibited by law, but it's just a policy decision.
Well, I'm just saying, even a policy decision, the policy would be violating somebody's free speech rights. I think this is once again, one of those classic examples of where one always has to distinguish between when one is speaking on behalf of the council and when one is speaking on behalf of oneself. And with the understanding, when you're speaking on behalf of yourself, you're, other than the fact that you're on the council, you're no different than other residents of San Carlos coming up to the TNC commission saying, hey, I think you ought to look at X. And that's the part I said I don't have a problem with. Not saying that anybody should feel compelled to do that, but I certainly don't have a problem with that. Sarah?
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. I had a question for Amy about the Parks and Rec Commission. We received some correspondence today from a community member who felt like the meetings have been canceled recently because there hasn't been a quorum. So I just wanted to check in with you on how that commission is going, what the quorum circumstances are.
The Parks, Recreation, Culture Commission is kind of in a unique spot right now. We had three commissioners, two who were terming out and one who was not going to seek reappointment, and for personal reasons couldn't commit to meetings for the end of the year. So just last week, we appointed three new commissioners who I think are going to be tremendous assets to the commission. And the other two commissioners were just appointed last year and still have a lot of energy that they want to put towards the commission. So I feel like we're in this new place to move forward in a positive direction.
Thank you. Has getting a quorum sometimes been an issue in the past? Like over the last couple of years, are meetings canceled because there is no quorum?
Yes. Typically, three meetings a year, two to three meetings a year have been canceled due to a lack of quorum.
And there's only six meetings a year?
Correct.
So half. Okay. So, thank you. I know that that's kind of a struggle on several commissions to my colleagues. So this, to me, kind of brings up the reappointment process because if there are people who consistently cannot come to meetings, I do not want to reappoint them. And I don't want it to be an automatic process.
Oh, fair enough. I was, I agree with that. I was almost going to wonder if maybe we should ask, I hate to say this in the kind of point of view of taking attendance, but maybe we ought to ask staff to keep us apprised of how frequently commission meetings are not, you know, being canceled due to lack of a quorum. Because that was the first time I can recall hearing that. You may have mentioned it and it just didn't get through to me. And yeah, that's definitely something we need to understand before we decide who we're reappointing.
Thank you. Is the reappointment process usually automatic? Or do we vote?
It is, it is always a vote, as I recall. It's, the reason I hesitated about when you referred to it as automatic is traditionally, it comes to a vote and the vote always goes through. I only know of one instance where that didn't happen in the last seven or eight years.
Right, because I wanted to ask what kind of information were given before we reappoint someone, and can attendance be part of that information process?
That was going to be exactly my suggestion back, is that we would include it in the staff report as part of a, a reappointment item that would come to the council, so you'd see that in the staff report and just show their, their attendance. Currently, the code says if a commissioner is absent unexcused for, I think it's 60 consecutive days, Greg said, and, or three consecutive meetings, then they would automatically forfeit their seat as a commissioner. You could, you could look at amending that section of the code too, to say, you know, so many percentage of meetings a year, if you miss, then that's it, your, your seat becomes vacant and the council's, you know, recruitment process begins.
That's, that's certainly something that we could do. I guess what I'm wondering is, is it possible to do it a little less formally than that? I'm not suggesting that we change what's, what's in there, but to the extent that staff is seeing the work of a commission being impeded by it not being able to get a quorum, even though it hasn't crossed that bright line yet, can't you share that information with us so that if we, if we need to at some point say, okay, we need to replace somebody, then we can do that?
We absolutely can. It's something maybe we should think about a little bit in terms of whether or not the council might want to delegate that kind of authority to council subcommittee. This could be, you may not want to, you see where I'm going, you may not want to have these conversations necessarily in this format and embarrass folks in our community who have volunteered to, to help the community and for whatever reason are, are maybe falling a little short of their own expectations.
Fair enough. Ron?
Yeah, just had another question, sorry. Sorry to bring you back up here, Amy. So while you're coming up, six meetings a year, for example, on Parks and Rec, and half of them get canceled because of lack of quorum, how many get canceled for a lack of agenda items?
I recall one meeting this past year was canceled due to lack of agenda items.
So it's more lack of quorum, and that means that when people, when you have to cancel a meeting, that means that potentially important items get delayed to the next meeting, which, which could be two months. Okay, that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Laura?
I'm sorry, not, not for you, I just wanted to respond to something Sarah said. Traditionally, council or commission reappointments have been consent calendar items, unless we hear something about, negative about a particular commission member that's up for reappointment, it's almost been an automatic process. And as Mark says, there have been a couple of times where that did not happen, but there were reasons for that.
But there was always a vote. It's not automatic in terms of.
Correct, there was always a vote. You're right.
Laura?
Thank you, Chair. So when I've served on other committees and volunteer capacities, and there is a regularly scheduled meeting, oftentimes there's an expectation set where the volunteer agrees to meet for, you know, so many meetings, and if X number of meetings are missed, then their membership is, you know, then there's a conversation, right? So I just wonder if, you know, we could just try to keep this simple and, you know, I know that, my understanding is in this last round of interviews, staff, when you first met prior to the interviews, you set expectations with everybody in terms of what the time commitment was, and I believe we actively listened to try to understand whether or not that the person could. But beyond that, I know life circumstances change, but maybe we could just keep, keep this very simple and, you know, do something like that.
Perfect. Could I ask one, just because we, we do this with some of the outside committees we're on, that we have sort of an alternate member? Is there a way to do that to maybe help when there's some, some absences that are, they're going to happen sometimes?
Yeah, that might work for certain commissions better than others. I could see that being difficult for the Planning Commission, just dropping somebody into, you know, a project that they're pretty deep in.
The Parks and Culture Commission, that might be an appropriate place to have an alternate member.
Absolutely, and, you know, if you're talking about expanding commissions, perhaps you're expanding them to include, you know, sitting alternates. You know, these aren't commissions that have, you know, real voting authority, they're advisory groups, just to help with the quorum issue. I'm also thinking a little bit more about our potential changes to the recruitment process, so that perhaps you're actually creating eligibility lists of commissioners, so that when you do your interviews once a year, imagine if that's how you do them, that you're not just filling positions, but you're also identifying who you would offer a position to if you had a vacancy because somebody wasn't attending meetings anymore, or somebody got sick, or had to move out of the community, or whatever, that you didn't have to, in that year, re-recruit, you'd already have a pool of folks where you already interviewed them, and you'd say, okay, that's who we, we've already identified who we wanted next, if next was an issue this year, and if it comes up, you go, you know, because you know how long the recruitment process can take, and when we have an unexpected vacancy, it can be months before we're able to, to fill it. So that might be something to help with both those issues.
Sort of like a standby appointment, and they'd be notified that they would be in a standby position.
Correct. It worked very well with us with the, our Planning Commission and TNC process recently, so.
Sarah?
Thank you, Mark. I just, I'm wondering if we can send a message back to our commissions that council really values their time and their volunteer efforts and their input, and we're really kind of depending on them to show up. You know, I feel like, I don't know, when I was on EDAC, some members would just automatically, like, block the meeting day, and others just, oh, a trip would come up, and we'd have a big roundtable scheduled, and it would have to get postponed, and then we have staff who are emailing, it's a tremendous amount of staff time that goes into finding out if there is a quorum, and you're constantly emailing, and then the chair is trying to reach out to commission members too. So I do feel like this attendance issue is kind of a, an issue that we're grappling with, so, you know, and if there's people who aren't showing up, and, you know, it would be helpful if a council member took them out to coffee to just kind of talk about how, the importance that we're placing on these commissions, I'm happy to volunteer for that. But I do, I would like this message to kind of sink in with our commissioners.
How, how common, other than for the Parks, Rec, and Culture Commission, is it that, that we're having meetings not taking place because we can't make quorum?
The, let's see, the, the commissions that come to mind most in terms of having had quorum issues would be TNC and Parks and Rec in recent years. EDAC has from time to time, but it doesn't seem like it's been an issue that I've heard much about in the last few years. Planning Commission, very seldom have we had quorum issues. It happens once in a while, and with the council, I'm not sure I can ever recall it happening.
Sarah, I don't, I agree with the sentiment of what you're saying. I was just sort of asking there to try and get a sense of, of, maybe to some extent, that it's less of an issue like on the Planning Commission, because the Planning Commission feels that it is more empowered, charged, whatever. And so maybe part of the message needs to be, we really need your help, and we really want you to be empowered and charged, and so that would fit in with what we had talked about before. Laura?
So a couple of things. I've heard some suggestions that I think sound interesting and could help fortify the commission attendance. I like the idea of appointing alternates as a backup if a quorum can't be met with the, the primary as well. I like the idea of kind of identifying potential people to move in later in the year. And I also think it's important, some of the feedback that I got early on from one of the Planning Commissioners felt that their work wasn't appreciated by council and that they didn't have really anything meaningful to work on, and it, I found it stunning because it was the Traffic and Circulation Commission, and that's like the number two problem in our community, so, well, close to one, I guess, it's kind of tied with development. But, so I, I believe it's, to some degree, the responsibility of the council to give really specific direction and outline objectives for these commissions, so that they feel like their work is valued and they do have something meaningful to work on.
I would, I would agree with that. I think there is another thing that could be done too, which is potentially, which is to, that's that greenfield thing, sort of encourage them to, to self-assign stuff too, to some extent. That, in my experience, has often been a way of getting people motivated as well, because then they, they have more of a stake in the game. There's different ways of getting stakes in the game. Yeah? Laura?
Thank you, Chair. So I appreciate that idea. I also, some of the feedback I got from the commission was that they were asked greenfield, and they came to council with recommendations, and they were largely ignored. So that's why I, part of that went into my thinking tonight when I came up with the list of, you know, tying back into the, you know, the strategic goals that we've already set, maybe starting with that as a framework.
Well, I appreciate the additional information, I mean, and I don't know the specifics or the, the involved, so it's hard to tell. I mean, one of the things people have to remember is regardless of the fundamental nature of an advisory body, is suggestions don't necessarily get implemented. I mean, that, that can be a difficult thing for people to understand and appreciate, and I know that over the years, I've had conversations with a handful of people who expressed an interest in, like, the Planning Commission or the TNC Commission, and when they learned that they were not going to be the, the decision-making body, that basically they were an advisory function, they said, I'm not interested in that. And I respect that, you know, different people have different desires in what they want to do, but they are, to this point at least, you know, advisory bodies. Other comments or feedback to, to suggestions, thoughts? If not, we will consider that item completed and move on. I think we are to additional council communications and announcements, reflections and agenda Don't see anything from anybody yet, so staff, staff comments on city administrative business?
Nothing additional this evening, Mr. Chair.
All right, then we will call the meeting adjourned.